That would be fun, shop and make money.
That would be amazing.
That would be so fun.
Marty, you good? I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Ms. Trigill, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Sagata, Mayor Protem Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to adjust one item on the agenda. It's not an action item, but the reports from commissioners was left off, left off, and I'd like to make that item number five, and then adjust the way down. So items of citizens present would become six. Action items, et cetera, would be seven, and then the adjournment would be eight. That would be a motion to do that. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Thank you. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay. Item four, recognition of visitors, et cetera. All city offices will be closed Friday, March 29th, in honor of Good Friday. Next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers. And we have a couple proclamations tonight. First, we have a proclamation in the matter of recognizing Mr. Alan Litchfield for his four decades of service to the city of Rattone, New Mexico. Whereas the city of Rattone, New Mexico recognizes and values its citizen servants who step forward to serve on boards, committees, and working groups to donate substantial amounts of time, talent, and energy to the betterment of the community, and whereas volunteering with a purpose is one of the central duties of the role of citizen and leader in our society. And whereas Mr. Alan Litchfield has served the Rattone Water Board for over four decades, including during the formation of the Rattone Water Works franchise in 1991. And whereas Mr. Alan Litchfield's service has covered many important milestones to the Rattone Water Board, including the 1994 filter plant expansion, the 2005 Permit 71 Water Rights State Approved Settlement Agreement, the 2006 wastewater treatment facility construction, the 2011 Track Fire Watershed Rehabilitation Project, and the 2023 Simroon Pumping System Upgrade, to name a few. And whereas the citizens of Rattone owe Mr. Alan Litchfield a great debt for his service that will be impossible to repay, now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Rattone, New Mexico, recognizes Mr. Alan Litchfield for his unselfish and dedicated service to the citizens of Rattone, New Mexico, a witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Rattone to be affixed this 26th day of March 2024, signed by me, the Mayor Protem. And Mr. Litchfield was unable to be here today. He did say that it was an honor to serve, and he really appreciated the gesture. So we appreciate him. Give him a round of applause. We have one more very special proclamation. In the matter of a proclamation recognizing Terry Lynn Lilcoca, or Lilloca, sorry, Cruz, in the city of Rattone, New Mexico. Whereas the city of Rattone, New Mexico recognizes and values Women's History Month to acknowledge the historical contributions of women, and especially the dedication and competitive spirit of women athletes that inspire our city, region, state, and nation. And whereas Rattone is the birthplace of Terry Lynn Cruz, and whereas Terry Lynn Cruz was raised in a family with many talented athletes, supported by her mother, Hayes Cruz, siblings Tammy Cruz, Mark Cruz, and her boxing relatives, father Arturo Cruz, Sr., brothers Arturo Cruz, Jr., Noah Cruz, her sister Brandy Fernandes, and niece Brittany Cruz, all of whom are respected in the boxing community. And whereas Terry Lynn Cruz won her first world title in October of 2025 over Heather Percival, where she was awarded the International Female Boxers Association World Bantamweight Title. And in September 2008, she won her second world title against Jessica Moes, earning the Women's International Boxing Association's Super Bantamweight Title. And whereas Terry Lynn Cruz retired in 2011 with a total of 26 fights and 130 rounds, and a professional record of 17-7-2. And whereas in 2019, Terry Lynn Cruz was inducted into the International Women's Boxing Hall of Fame. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Rattone, New Mexico, recognizes its native daughter, Terry Lynn Lilloca Cruz, for her inspiration to the citizens of Rattone, New Mexico. A witness whereof, I have hereto set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Rattone to be affixed this 26th day of March 2024, signed by me as well. And we just want to stress what an incredible honor this is. This was brought to our attention fairly recently that we had this, and so we wanted to do something to honor that amazing achievement here. So a round of applause, I think. Thank you very much. Next, we have introduction of new employees. Mr. Messis?
There are no new employees tonight, but we will have two at the next meeting.
Okay. And we will go ahead and move on to item five, which we had amended as reports from commissioners. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacomo?
Rattone Public Service Company Board of Directors met on March 25, 2024, at 6:00 PM. Robin Osborne, Office Manager and Bookkeeper, presented to and approved by the board the financial and statistical information. City Manager Rick Messis presented to and held discussion with the city board broadband. Reviewed and approved was a survey of rates for forward attachments and access to the right ways. Reviewed also was, and approved was a poll of attachment pricing improvement, discussion and acceptance of full attachment agreement annual cost. Notice of options to extend Rattone Natural Gas Company first revised from Form Number 9, standard transportation contract between the Rattone Natural Gas and Rattone Public Service, effective date January 1st, back in 2021. Reviewed and approved of Rattone Public Service Company Resolution 20-24-2, RPS, Board of Directors' acknowledgement of the FY '23 audit. Rattone Public Service General Manager Dave Francino reported on Unit 4 and also on the solar project. Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Advisory Board met on Tuesday, March 19th, at 2:00 AM, 24, at 5:30 PM. Library Director Danny Marcus reported to the board that the state geo bonds and the state grant in aid have been received in the amount of $10,353.38, and will have to be spent by June 30th, 2024. On the agenda was a request to have the meetings for the library board. Times changed to 5:00 instead of 5:30 PM, which was in favor by all. Library changes being discussed at this time were to include those in five to six-year timeframe. Danny and Melanie covered their work activities, performed to include all scheduled programs. Statistical report for month of January 2024. Donations collected with zero, fines collected $150.30, copies made with $516.50, memorials received with $20. Story hours, story hours held, two attended by four persons. Programs held with 28, attended by eight or four persons. Statistical report for month of February 2024. Donations received with zero, fines collected $240.78, copies made with $657.55, memorials received with zero, story hours held in three, attended by 17 persons. Story hours held, programs held with 28, attended by 82 persons. That's all I got to make up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schuster?
All right. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board met on Tuesday, March 19th. Unfortunately, I was unable to make it back from Denver to attend that. However, I do know that, because I had spoken to Monica earlier the week prior, that she was working hard on their financial report, and that was pretty much, looked like the main item on their agenda. So that, I'm sure, was a big weight off of her shoulders. Also, on Tuesday, March 19th, was the Water Board meeting. And the highlights of that are Lake Meloya is full. Filter plant usage for February was under 24.3 milligrams with a peak flow of 1,000, or 1,030 gallons. We have placed two siphons on the spillway at 150 GPM siphon for a total of 300 GPM to help bring down the lake level before spring runoff. They also, dam inspection will be occurring on April 3rd at 8:00 AM. And so board members will be able to attend and be present for that. They started pumping to the golf course and hired a trainee who starts with the wastewater, who started on March 20th. Also had a meeting with Ray Richards on Wednesday, the 21st, regarding the core main recommendations. That's all I have on that one. You may have some more, Commissioner.
Perfect.
Mayor Protem Chatterley was also in attendance to that. May, or March 20th, I don't know why I'm jumping ahead to me, sorry. March 20th was the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. We will be discussing a good majority of that tonight. And as they present their recommendations, some of the highlights are money for the abundance, for the beautify Rattone, the hanging baskets. This year, most of those will be purchased from Abundance Gardens. And we have some fun and exciting news regarding the Main Street and the Gate City Music Festival. I'm sure Brenda will be giving some of those highlights later. So, and that's all I have on that one. March 22nd, there was a Regulation and Licensing Board meeting in the morning. And then a tight squeeze in after that was the, a new committee, which is through the New Mexico Economic Development Project. And that is the Committee for Community Cares and the Council of Governments. So the main item on the agenda was looking at new strategic, the next strategic goals, and coming up with with action items for the committee. They said this is, that was the first meeting. And they intend to meet after Easter every Friday for a short time, and then bring it down to once a month. So I'll have more information as it progresses. Mayor Sagata was also in attendance at that meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. As for myself, I wanted to do a little report on the Ports to Plains, Washington DC fly-in. This is regarding the future Interstate I-27. So this was, I was there March 3rd through 8th. Monday, the board met for a legislative update and planning session for the visits. We went over each state's priorities. So there are nine states in the Ports to Plains corridor. They include Texas, Oklahoma, New Mexico, Colorado, Nebraska, Wyoming, South Dakota, North Dakota, and Montana. Some of the states have just a little tiny segment, but nonetheless, they're part of that integral trade route. Some of the states are not yet represented on Ports to Plains. And so those of us who were there then meet with their states and try to educate them and explain a little bit about what Ports to Plains is and the initiatives there. Let's see. A lot of what we talk about is the increase in trade between Texas and Canada, and vice versa, in exports along the corridor, and the increases in trucking traffic that are going on, and making sure that those roads will be up to a standard that can handle that kind of load. One new program was brought to our attention, and this is specifically going to affect us and Texas. And this is going to cause further demand along the route. The Department of Defense has a newly designated military route called the Power Projection Platform that is going to be coming south out of Fort Carson on I-25, and then connects exactly at our interchange, the 8764 interchange there, and continues down to the Port of Beaumont and Port Arthur in Texas. They were doing a lot of research, and they're just in very early planning stages. But they're just looking at these routes as potential, to have potential capability and adequate roads, bridges, and designs that will be safe and efficient to support rapid movement of military equipment if needed. That's all, it's very early stages. I wasn't even at the meeting. We just got this information when we were there in DC through the lobbyists there. So they have identified that particular junction with 8764 as a place that needs some work. Obviously, we already know that. That's going to be getting some work. But they're also looking at, really carefully, at the road pavement conditions, at the bridge conditions, at what kind of loads it can handle. So besides needed improvements for truck export traffic and increasing visitor traffic in New Mexico, this DoD route is another thing there. So in DC, our ask for the state of New Mexico was 1.6 million in congressionally-directed spending money with a 400,000 state match to plan a future I-27 alignment with I-25 in Rattone. So if those funds are awarded, they would be used by New Mexico DOT to plan alignment and would give our community the input we need to protect our economy and decide how best that would tie in. There have been no decisions made. I just want to make sure everybody knows that. The planning is, we don't even have the money for the planning yet. But what would happen is typically, just like the redoing exit 451 that they've been working on, that isn't related to the I-27 project. But they would have community meetings, community input, and it's really important for us, the citizens and business owners, to talk and really discuss about what that looks best for us, where that interstate would potentially tie in the best for Rattone. We definitely do not want to be bypassed. What was kind of neat is while we were in DC, the two bills that we worked on the previous year were finally passed. The first was the actual numbering designation. So we've been designated as the Ports to Plains corridor, but not given a number. I-27 had been thrown around, but it wasn't official. So that was made official in Texas and New Mexico. The second was the very similar ask. It was a 1.6 million federal request with 400,000 state and community-directed spending money, particularly related to Clayton's alignment. So that did pass. So NMDOT should be able to start planning that alignment in Clayton. And they have a very high safety concern with the way that the trucks are in their downtown. So that was the most important ask. So that one did pass. Ours could be years or never. You never know with the federal government what's going to happen there. At several meetings during the week, I met with staff from Congressman Dusty Johnson's office from South Dakota to help educate them and explain what we were doing. I met with Adalind DeYoung, the Senior Policy Advisor from Teresa Ledger Fernandez's office. I met with staff from Lauren Boebert's office in Colorado, and helped others in the alliance, because they don't have a really strong Colorado presence on part of it yet. On Wednesday, I met with Jacob Lindas, the Legislative Assistant for Martin Heinrich's office. I also met with Congresswoman Harriet Hagerman and staff from her office from Wyoming. I met with Sophia Block, the Legislative Assistant from Senator Ben Ray Lujan's office. I was also, I bumped into Senator Lujan outside his office in the hallway and talked to him for a few minutes, vented to him about some of our concerns. And then Thursday, we had overflow meetings with the US Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration. What I really appreciate about going there is that all of our New Mexico delegation is very friendly, very well-received. In fact, in these meetings, people from other areas along the corridor will come and sit with me when I'm at my meeting, and we support each other. And they were floored by how welcoming all the New Mexico meetings were. They don't always get that welcome in their states. I just felt like they very much stand ready to support our town and other towns along the corridor to make sure that we have the best outcome for our communities. And I know, I want to say thank you to our city and our contracted staff who've been working hard to submit that, those rounds of community funding requests to all the different offices, including the I-25-27 alignment study. And I also want to thank the many community partners who've been writing support letters for our projects, not just the I-27, but all the other projects that Rattone has on the docket. While I was in DC, I also listened in on the New Mexico Municipal League Legislative, Municipal League Legislative Recap on March 7th over Zoom. The most exciting and huge win is the 3% New Mexico tax and rev charges, all the municipalities 3% administration, just to give us our gross receipts tax. And we've been feeling like that is incredibly unfair. And it amounts to over $70 million in New Mexico that doesn't go to municipalities. And so they actually passed legislation to start phasing that out in fiscal year 2027 over three years. So that's a really exciting win for all the municipalities in New Mexico. On March 15th, I met via Zoom with representatives from Ports to Plains, Colfax County, Better Cities, the Town of Clayton, city of Rattone, regarding that community, or sorry, congressionally-directed spending request that I mentioned earlier. On March 19th, I went to the Water Board meeting. Commissioner Schuster did a great job with that. And then coming up, there is a Ports to Plains meeting in Lubbock, but I plan to attend via Zoom, as I'm a little traveled out right now. And we have Water Board meetings. And then on April 19th, I arranged a meeting with the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, and the Biggerys Pueblo, and that will be in Guyman. And then we have the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board meeting coming up April 25th. And that's all I had. So we'll move on to item six, items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission about something that is not on the agenda is welcome to speak at this time. Okay, moving on. Item seven, our action items. Item A, deliberate and act on approval of March 12, 2024, regular meeting minutes. If there are none, no corrections, then the minutes will stand approved as submitted. Okay. They will stand approved. Item B, deliberate and act on Rattone Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Request from Rattone Arts and Humanities Council, Inc., Mr. Messis.
Mayor Protem and Commissioner, the Rattone City Lodger's Tax Board met on March 20th, 2024, and approved continued support of Old Pass Art Gallery for 1,500 a month for a total of $18,000 for FY '24-25.
I'm sorry, that one doesn't go to the Lodger's Tax Board.
Or does it? Which one is that?
That's this one. It doesn't go to the Lodger's Tax Board. It just comes to the city commission.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Just because it's non-promotional funds.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Is there anybody here who would like, Brenda, did you want to say anything? Well, we love to hear from you.
Good evening, everybody. Commissioners and city manager, I appreciate you having me here. So every year, we come to you and ask for support for the year. It's $18,000 total. And that just helps with our, my salary, let's just be honest. And everything else we do, we do via grants. With the Wythe Foundation, New Mexico Arts, the Slope Prints Foundation, the Macarone Foundation. Trying to think of all the little pieces we put together. We do have a fundraising campaign, which we raise about $6,000. And so that just kind of keeps us going. We are in a city building, but we do pay our own utilities. And so that, that kind of helps too. Yeah.
And we very much appreciate what you do.
In your packets, you can kind of see what we do do. If you have any questions, just let me know.
I was going to tell you, I also appreciate that you submit the quarterly financials and keep us up to date on everything.
Absolutely.
That's really useful, keeping up on things. Appreciate that.
Good.
And I appreciate the statistics you have here of the different visitors at the Old Pass and the productions and things, and number of people attending art shows, and all kinds of great statistics.
We sure hope to get more into the theater. You know, each year, we do have a lot of new residents moving into town. I did sell a lot of new season tickets this year. City Manager and his wife are new season ticket holders. Mayor Protem is a new season ticket holder. Commissioner Schuster has always been a season ticket holder, so just saw, I just saw Commissioner Jacomo at a show, so we appreciate that. I mean, the shows we do bring into the theater are very high quality. They're, every one this year was just so good, so good. And next year, we have a season setup that's just as good.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission or comments? Thank you so much, Brenda.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Hold a second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item B, the Rattone Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Request from Rattone Arts and Humanities Council for $18,000 for the fiscal year 24-25. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item C, deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. Mr. Messis?
Okay, this time. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on March 20th, 2024, and the following are the board's recommendations. The city commission sponsored $20,532.05 to be awarded to Rattone Main Street for the Gate City Music Festival. And this is to cover advertising, social media advertising, Rattone Visitors Guide posters, et cetera. The second recommendation was the recommending that $9,248 be awarded to Rattone Main Street for the Beautification Coalition. The funding request is for Lisa Kemp, for tires and maintenance for her vehicle, fuel through the summer, fertilizer, and flowers for the barrel. This will be coming out of the contingency fund. The third recommendation, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the city commission that $12,000 be awarded to KRDOTV for advertisement of the Gate City Music Festival, Run to Rattone, and the balloon rally. The advertisements will consist of TV commercials, KRDO homepage, and KRDO web banners. And again, this is out of the contingency fund. And then finally, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending $2,625 be awarded to Tumbleweeds Magazine for five quarter-page, full-page ads. The board would like to try quarter-page ads rather than full-page ads. And this is coming out of the print advertisement.
Sorry.
Anybody would like to look at that magazine? We have a couple copies up here.
Is there any, would you like to speak about Gate City a little bit, Brenda?
Sure.
Beautification, or whatever, whatever it may, or who?
Okay, so I can start with Gate City. We're planning, we're rolling, we're moving forward, full steam ahead. This year's entertainer at the Schuler will be Lori Morgan. We've already retained her. We have a contract with her. This year, it's kind of exciting. We're actually moving into the year with $10,000 in seed money. Woo-hoo! We're finally able to start putting some money in that account and move forward, which is awesome. It's only taken us eight years. Actually, nine, because we had that one year that just kind of got scratched, right? So, but we do have most of our entertainment set up. We are feverishly looking at new options for our Kid Zone, and maybe moving it to a different section. And so I had a few calls out today, so I don't want to say yet, because we just don't know if those are going to come, and I don't want to get people's hopes up if they're not. I was telling a few people earlier, we do have some bands for Saturday, two different bands coming from Albuquerque, so that's kind of new and exciting, something different. So that's what I have. Does anybody have? what I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
And then on the Beautification Coalition. So this is a partnership between Grow Rattone, Rattone Main Street, a few remaining members of the people that were on the chamber, David Stafford and Diane Tripp, and the, I did this at the Lodger's Tax meeting too.
The Center?
The Center, yes. But the New Mexico State University, the Master Gardeners.
Master Gardeners.
Yes. Yes. And so I just write the request, actually Grow Rattone is the fiscal agent. They handle paying Lisa Camp and writing all the checks and stuff like that. So we just, it's kind of a big partnership that we put together and it works well. I just help hang flowers and take flowers down. But this is our budget. And you know, she's out there working tirelessly. She waters twice a day for almost four months straight. And the little ATV that she rides, that was purchased for the Beautification Coalition by one of the foundations in town. We just have to pay the maintenance and the upkeep on that. So, but the request helps to pay her for doing it and to order the flowers as the City Manager said.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions for Brenda?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else here that would like to comment on the Lodger's Tax recommendations? I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations.
I have a motion in a second to approve Item C, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate an act on Planning and Zoning Commission Board Recommendation. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Protem and Commission, the Planning and Zoning Board met on March 21, 2024, and recommended to approve a lot consolidation on the proposed Maverick Gas Station located at lots 1 and 2, Block 5 in the Eagle Tray Incorporated First Subdivision within Section 1 Township 30, North Range 23 East on the New Mexico plat map. In other words, way down on the south side of the Second Street.
Excellent. Do we have anyone here to give us any more information? Mr. Nolan?
Good evening, Commissioners and Commissioners. We have on the phone Andreas Valerius. I can't pronounce his last name, but he's on the phone. Kennedy.
Go ahead a little. Hold on just a second. We're turning up the volume. There we go. Okay, sorry. Will you start over? Thank you.
No, you're all right. Good evening, Board, and thank you, Kevin. I appreciate everybody's time. I would like to apologize first and foremost for not being present. My flight was canceled and I couldn't find one that would get me there anytime. So I'm sure I'll be back in the next few months, but for tonight, I'll be here representing Maverick on the phone.
That's okay. We're glad to have you. Did you have any comments about this consolidation?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions from the commission? Okay. You have any problems? Okay, myself. I would entertain a motion. All right, I have a motion in a second for the Planning and Zoning Commission Board Recommendations for the, I'm going to read this actual out here, to approve the lot consolidation for the future proposed Maverick Incorporated Gas Station on lots 1 and 2, Block 5 Eagle Tail, Inc. subdivision. Any further comments or questions? Ms. Trio, could we have a roll call, both?
Sure. Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Andreas, for being on the phone. Appreciate you.
Of course. Thank you so much. I look forward to meeting on Maverick in your city. I hope you have a very good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, bye-bye. Item E, deliberate an act on J&amp;M Displays 2024 Fireworks Show Proposal. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Protem and Commission, this agreement for $32,000 is for J&amp;M Displays to put on a fireworks display on July 4, 2024, which is scheduled at dusk near the Aquatic Center. It has been sent through Chief Anthony Burke and all of the forms are in order.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. So I did give you a detailed breakdown of the fireworks show expenses from prior years. I know Commissioner Giacomo had asked me for that information yesterday. So you'll see that $32,200 is the show that was purchased last year. So this would be the same show as previously. The costs have gone up from year to year during COVID. We didn't have any donations, but we had a show that was still $23,000. And so for 2020 and 2021, we did the $23,000 show. And then in 2022, it went up to the $28,000. But I did want to point out that part of the reason that the costs have increased over the years, you'll recall that years ago, the fire department used to actually shoot off the fireworks. And so we no longer do that. So J&amp;M Displays actually shoots the fireworks. So we contract with them to do that. So that expense alone is $3,200. And then there's also additional insurance fees of $3,200. They do carry a $10 million liability policy to cover the spectators. And then they also have a worker's comp expense for those that shoot off the show. So that's part of the reason for the increase in the costs that we've seen in years past. I did want to report that we do have $4,912 in donations to apply towards this year's purchase. So that'll leave $27,288 that comes out of the Lodger's Tax Non-Promotional Fund. And we did budget $28,000. So that comes in line with what we budgeted.
Thank you so much, Mike Glenn.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you for your.
Oh, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve J&amp;M Display 2024 Fireworks Show Proposal.
A second. Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the J&amp;M Displays 2024 Fireworks Show Proposal for the $32,200?
Yeah.
Yep, $32,200. And if needed, plus gross receipts tax. I'll assume that probably has it.
No, I believe that.
That includes it. Okay. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Item F, Discussion District Little League President. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Protem and Commission, I would like to recognize and call forward Mr. Canobeta. See here.
Welcome, Mr. Beta.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the time. There you go. Wanted to inform you all of what had happened within District 4. District 4 is the district that which the Rattone Little League houses in. And I am the district administrator for District 4. District 4 does have nine leagues in total: Rattone, Mora, Taos, Springer, Simarón, Santa Rosa, Quay County, two in Las Vegas, and Fort Sumner. Fort Sumner just broke off from Santa Rosa, so they became their own district. So, or only now. So we were looking to host district tournaments. And what we had, what I had decided, because I was the president of Plaza Little League in Las Vegas, and we hosted district and state tournaments last year, and it was a huge undertaking. So I made all the presidents aware, since this is my first year as district administrator, I said, what I want to do is go out to bid and process to see exactly who would be able to handle it. It's a very large undertaking to make sure that the field's ready. But even before that, to make sure that you have the support, that you have the backing of your board, but you also have the backing volunteers, and as well as the city, because it's a huge, huge influx of people for the city. Because most are coming for a minimum of two days, three days for sure. And then as they win, they continue to play. So it could be five to six days. We're breaking up into two different sections. We're having our softball tournament and our baseball tournament. Softball tournament is going to start a little bit sooner. Baseball tournament starts a little bit later, but we have to coincide with the state playoffs that will be housed in Albuquerque and in Silver City. When I took this to the presidents of all District 4, I let them know exactly what was going on. I had two communities bid for, and that was Rattone and Las Vegas Little League in Las Vegas, Mexico. In talking over with the Las Vegas president, Las Vegas bowed out, and the vote was taken, and Rattone has been selected to house district tournament for District 4 this year.
Excellent.
Wanted to congratulate you all on being selected the host. We are looking at the dates of...
Softball will be June 14 through the 18th, and then baseball will be June 21 through the 28th.
Now, just to kind of give you an idea, everybody can charter up to three of the Little League teams. In softball, it'll be the juniors and the seniors. So that's five teams total with a possible, possibility of 12 kids per team, which you're then looking at families and everybody coming in on top of that. So on one kid, we usually counted four per kid on the team. So you're seeing a huge influx to the Lodger's Tax, especially with all those people coming in, spending the night, eating, making sure that they, you see all the huge amenities that our president here had kind of listed on his presentation. He went through everything. And we just want to make sure that you guys are fully aware of what's going on and kind of what we're going to be looking at, is to make sure that the fields are ready. With Little League, we do follow specific rules, and there is a rule for everything within the rulebook. So there's going to be some fields that we're going to have to look at the maintenance on, and kind of make sure that things are met to that point. I know there was some work being done with the porta-potties that are going to be upgraded, that need to kind of happen. But also, just to kind of give you an idea as well, when I was working with the City of Las Vegas, there was a lot of talk, there's a lot of options. Some of those are pretty, pretty cool that you can do out and see if you can. There's different discounts that some of the chamber may kind of want to do, the small business can also do as well. But a good idea that we kind of had thought of for ours was a gift bag, something, a small backpack, maybe, you know, water bottle, yo-yo highlighter, something like that, just for to kind of have, because they're going to be going around a lot. They're going to have a lot of gear that they're going to be calling it out. They do have their own baseball gear, but I'm pretty sure if they go to the pools, they go to anything around here, they're going to kind of want to bring stuff in and take stuff out. So just to kind of make you guys aware of some ideas. I don't want to be, this to be the only presentation that I do. I would like to sit with Dustin as well as somebody from the city to kind of say, okay, let's make sure everything hits the check marks before we do. I had a lot of issues with my tournament that I held, and it was a lot of last minute stuff. I really don't want that to happen again. So I'm going to start planning, truthfully. We've already started planning, and we're going to continue to go through the fields and the areas and make sure that we highlight everything, that it's simple. So when we have that first day of everybody coming into Rattone, we can kind of have that coaches meeting and let them know everything that you guys have to offer. Hand out the bags at that point. If you guys so choose, let them know what amenities you guys want highlighted, and let them know which ones to visit and which times and everything. So with that, I stand for any questions you all may have.
That is excellent. I think we're all very excited to have this. We want to commend our Little League Board. They're wonderful and all the work that's put in onto this, and I'm sure there's more. And so if I'm in town, call me up. I'll do, I volunteer. You call, I'm serious.
I'm sure you guys have background checking.
You need me to run a concession stand? I don't know if I can umpire. But this is really, really awesome for our town, for our kids, and just for, I know we've been working, not we, I'm not working out the fields, but Jason's group is working out there. Jason, did you want to make any comments about the fields or anything?
Yeah, if I may. Mayor Commission, we also like to echo our sentiment that we're glad to see it come. We know it's going to be a challenge. We have ongoing construction projects that may or may not be completed before this tournament starts, but we feel like we have backup plans for any contingency, including the use of the convention center down the street if we need to. You know, as we look at these days, we may want to block some time out of that facility to be able to use it for kind of a host location. Our hygiene paws for the grill softball field are here and will be installed within the next couple of weeks. Our shipping container restroom is on a tight timeline with that first softball round. So in addition to that, you know, we have a lot of projects going on right now that all may not be done, but talking to Dustin, we're just going to do whatever it takes. If we have to get some food trucks involved, you know, if we have to bring the Blackstone Grills from home and let Little League use it, it's going to come down to volunteers on a lot of their side. I mean, obviously, we're not party planners. That's not what we do. But we're going to staff up high school kids, drag fields, mark fields. We're going to work our guys hard at maintaining the facilities, but we're going to clearly need help with that extracurricular stuff, things like gift bags, and maybe Lodger's Tax asks for some Rattone gear and garb, and maybe some help blocking rooms out and things like that. But Little League's got a strong board. They've got a lot of volunteer pool. I think if we put out the call, we've always got it for Gate City and everywhere else. And I have no doubt that, you know, we could partner with Main Street or a variety of organizations to help it. But I do think we have some great fields. We've already kind of modified one of our fields to be dual-use. Little League has bought some portable mounds and stuff where we can, we can realistically expect to be able to accommodate this on fields that are some of the most playable in the state. I mean, we've been fortunate, we've had moisture. We haven't fired up our irrigation system yet, but our fields are already turned in green. And we've been maintaining way earlier in the year than we normally start. So I think it'll be a success. There'll be a hiccup or two, but that's life, and we'll figure out how to work through it. But I think if we can address things upfront, there might be items that we need to purchase. We have money to purchase. Little League has money. So I'm not really afraid of it. It's a big under, Jake. Yeah. We have a scoreboard. Hopefully, people score some runs. So, but...
Yeah, the scoreboard is here.
Excellent.
It's at the RPS Warehouse. John T. said next week, some point. Kind of waiting for weather to kind of turn a little bit for him. Go get the, I'm going to put the mallet field, the second field up, so.
Sweet.
And what's unique is, you know, we're kind of a dying breed that we have significant water reserves and reclaimed water, where we're running grass fields at six different locations. And everyone's kind of having to pivot to turf more because they don't have water availability. We've got excellent fields and plenty of water. As soon as it stops snowing, we'll provide some water ourselves. In the meantime, we'll take the free moisture.
Absolutely. Thank you. I know this is going to take a lot of work, and I'm dead serious. If I can volunteer to help, let me know. What can I do? And really, you get a request to Lodger's Tax, so we can help you guys get the goodie bags, whatever you guys need. Yeah.
For sure. Last thing, nothing else. I want to just kind of update you guys. We had our Skills Day tryout, call tryouts, but it's not a tryout. Skills Day and Draft last Wednesday. I postponed it from Sunday because it snowed last Sunday also. We had a great turnout. It ended up, we had to, we added a senior league girls softball team. So we will be providing that. We had so many major league girls softball that we had to extend to a fourth team. So we have four teams now in that division. And then we had so many little kids, we went to a fifth T-ball team.
Nice.
So we're packed across the board, having to add stuff. I had to call and order a bunch of equipment two days ago. That's already on its way from Shields in Colorado Springs, their partner of ours. We ordered uniforms for everybody other than the senior divisions.
Wow.
We still have a little time on them because I have to wait for high school stuff to finish up. That was a pretty penny, but they're in the works and will be here for opening day, April 13th.
And what did you say your registration number was?
247, I believe.
And that just reinforces what we say. I mean, a lot of people come to this board looking for money and have participation in the 30s. But I mean, we're talking almost 300 participants.
That's excellent. That's excellent.
So, uh, one last thing, just to kind of touch base on, is I want to, uh, congratulate the Raton Little League on, uh, first time, uh, chartering and actually having kids registered for an intermediate division, which is, uh, thirteen-year ball. Um, this will be the, only the second time that we have an intermediate tournament as well. Uh, last year was our first. This will be our second, and that division seems to be growing because we only had three last year, and I think we're going to have four, five intermediate teams this year coming to play. So that is a, a step between the majors and the juniors where they, the juniors, seniors play on a high school field. The intermediate play on a modified field where it's not the full ninety-foot bases, but it's a seventy-foot base because when we see a lot of kids, um, transition from majors to seniors, once they hit that sixty feet where normally is, you watch them hit the quicksand and slowly try to get the rest of the way to the first base. But, um, congratulations on that and bringing the first, uh, intermediate team, uh, and chartering that as well, so.
That intermediate division is why we're going to have to utilize Bonham Park. Um, the field size is within the parameters. The only thing is the base paths. We'll have to, uh, extend them a little bit out up there or over there. It should take very little to get this done. So that's the only field we should have to modify, which is, like I said, just the base paths and everything else is good. We're not tearing down fences and stuff, so.
Are you fixing the restroom facilities for that kind of crowd?
Well, we have the bathroom pods. Um, I'm also going to go speak to the county and see if they, I've heard some rumblings of possibly a bathroom trailer that they're purchasing for some other events. Um, I'm going to see when we get that over there. And then all, if, I've already spoken to the schools, and the schools are possibly, I wouldn't say for sure, going to open up Longfellow with a person that's standing there at the school door, kind of an escort, um, for Bonham at least. And then, I mean, we will have to have some fortified. It's just, there's going to be too many people. We're all going to be spread out to floor. Um, just cross your fingers that the shipping container gets here. So I'm confident. Jason says we can use his houses.
That's the beauty of the convention center being a blockway is kind of a stopgap if we have to.
If you need those bathrooms.
And so motel accommodations though, have you talked to the...
I haven't spoke to the hotels yet. Um, but last time, I think we hosted, three years ago, but it was right after COVID, so we only had two teams here. It was us and Springer. Um, but there were deals made there. Um, so hopefully they'll...
But I mean, there's sufficient room count though.
Oh, yes, sir.
Handle everybody.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
You're welcome.
Yeah, very excited. Thank you so much. Excellent. Thank you for coming up.
I'm going to go give them a tour of our fields.
Cool.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Dustin, thank you.
It's going to stay. So that item, item F was a discussion-only item, so we'll move on to item G. Deliverate an Act on Engineering Analytics, Inc. Fee Proposal for Design of Bridge Replacements Along Railroad Avenue and Schuler Street. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor ProTainment Commission, this is the Three Bridges Program to repair two bridges on Railroad Avenue north of Second Street and Schuler Street between Collier and Dwyer Avenue. The cost for the project, uh, for the proposed services is eighty-five thousand, and I would like to recognize, uh, Mr. Jason Phillips, Public Works Director.
Uh, Mayor ProTainment Commission, um, long story short, the Three Bridges Project has been in the works, planning-wise, for over a decade. Uh, this grant application was submitted prior to City Manager Barry's retirement, so the grant application did not include engineering services because we were going to get those for free. Um, unfortunately, we now have to pay for engineering services, so, um, we are going to be a little tighter on the budget than the grant application allowed for. Um, Ms. Sterns is in attendance, but she has formally more added this proposal, uh, with items one through five. Items one through four are most critical items. Item five, that amounts to seventeen thousand six hundred dollars, are additional services that we may be able to do in-house. Um, my request this evening would be to approve the proposal for the eighty-five thousand dollar plus gross receipts tax, but knowing if money gets tight, that I will intervene and, and try to take all of the items that I can on task five on ourself. If we're able to get, you know, acceptable bid, I would graciously rather have Karen and Tyler do those if, if we haven't in the available funding. But, uh, given the state of gas tax and, um, the uncertainty of pricing of this project, um, I would recommend that full amount. In advance, I would point out that there are a number of exclusions in this, and, um, bridges are a different animal in the DOT world. Getting through historic preservation with a couple WPA era structures, getting through environmental clearance to, uh, cross what may or may not be a perennial waterway, uh, can be a challenge. So they have made a good faith effort to estimate what those costs would be, but this is kind of a best-case scenario. It oftentimes you run into an issue where a bridge is maybe deemed historic. You have to have an architectural historian come out, photograph it, have, um, potentially a threatened endangered species review. There's a number of costs, and until we're farther along in this process, we won't have a handle on. So in case we do need to come back for additional services, I, I want everyone to know upfront that we are looking through a little rose-colored glasses. Hopefully, if we can get the design done right, we can maybe streamline through the process and avoid some pitfalls. Um, but the bridges are prioritized as one, two, and three. Um, the two bridges on Railroad Avenue, uh, scare me far worse than the third bridge on Schuler. If we had to get to a point where we cut a bridge out, that would be where I would be looking to go. And it's entirely possible, given the state of funding, we may, it may be a two-bridge project and not a three-bike project. But, uh, you know, at the time that these were submitted, we were seeing a more favorable bidding environment than we do today. So we're hoping for the best, but we'll never know until we get a little farther. So be happy. It's time for any questions. Ms. Stern is here. Do you have any questions to her as well?
Any questions from the commission? I do. So is that agreement to, um, leave off five if, if Jason's team, if that's okay with you?
Yes. So, um, we, we talked about this, and this is actually what I had recommended because I'm a little nervous about the funding amount, uh, and the complexity. Even though two of these bridges are really small bridges, um, there's a lot of utilities. Given the historic nature of them, uh, tends to build up the complexity of them.
Right.
So, um, I thought it would be a good idea to keep, um, let's see, we have tasks one, two, and three through the bid-based services as firm fixed price. And then we have construction-based services as timing materials. And then, uh, the additional services is also timing materials so that, um, and basically we'll just be asking Jason, "Do you want us to do this? Do you want to take care of this?" Um, so yeah, so I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I think it'll be a, a good way to be able to be as lean as possible on this to get as much done. Um, and, and I did want to add on the environmental permitting. So the DOT, their process is basically to submit, uh, some pretty minimal, uh, paperwork and research findings, and then from that, they determine if they're going to need more. And, uh, the range of services for environmental permitting is practically nothing to, uh, something that can take years long.
Right.
So we don't want to try to, you know, guess what in fact they're going to be requesting. The best thing is for us, uh, we'll actually do, uh, some pretty minimal, uh, design and then get that paperwork to them so that we can get that to them early, and then hopefully they'll give us a response very quickly and give us an idea on which way we can go. But we're also looking at, um, uh, replacement options that hopefully will be more favorable from an environmental historical perspective. Um, so with that, hopefully it goes smoothly.
Your guess, how old are these bridges?
Uh, well, it's difficult to say. The Timber Bridge, uh, that's, uh, bridge number one, uh, far north one on Railroad. Um, we were hearing that that, I think the deck was repaired maybe forty, fifty years ago.
I'm hoping they're one day short of fifty years, and they're not as historical. We don't really have good background information. And we know when the WPA was constructed, but there's no indication that the bridges were constructed on that very day. So, um, and it looks like they potentially have been rebuilt over time.
So they could be nineteen thirty-ish, possibly.
I would be surprised. I would be surprised. Two of the bridges are on the WPA channels, and they actually use the channels, the Rock Mine Channels as abutments. Um, so it's difficult to tell when those were actually built. They could have definitely been built after the channels were built, as the channel is a complete section all the way through.
And to add to the complexity, Railroad Avenue has no secondary egress. So the number of residents that live past these bridges are going to not have access to their home or drivable access. We're looking at potential detour routes, low water crossings, things that may be able to minimize that. It's the only real area of Raton I've seen that you have this situation, and of course, we have two bridges on it. So that may increase construction costs because we may be doing methods that are cast in place and able to be set so we can open faster. You know, we, we may have to make design concessions, not just on an environmental front, but on a cost basis to try to get there. And ultimately, I wouldn't absolutely exclude coming to y'all and asking for more funds to finish the project. I mean, if, if our bids are within the realm of, of what gas tax could possibly stomach or a dip into general fund reserves, uh, this replacement's been a long time coming. We're very fortunate to have the half million dollars that we have in the fold right now, but I think they're never going to be cheaper. Nothing is going down in price anytime soon. So if we have a chance to do it, I would say we go forward.
So you're hoping it's, we bring this half million dollars?
Really hoping. Living on a lot of hope lately.
I know this is a stretch. Any chance of cooperation with the railroad?
Um, not that I could see. I mean, we're clearly out of there right away and no net benefit to them on...
Well, I mean, if we hadn't crossed it as an egress.
Oh, yeah. I've, uh, looked at that possibility from Google Earth. Uh, it's pretty slim. I think that they would allow a temporary egress without a flagman on it, but, uh, it's worth asking the track master for. That's an ask, but I'm not real hopeful that the answer is yes in that case.
Because your only other alternative is the flood control ditch on the other side, isn't it?
Any further comments or questions? I will say that the contract looked good. You know, I think you guys have handled it really well in terms of these things are excluded because we have no idea moving forward what we're going to need, and it's, it kind of actually gives us an idea of other things that might be needed in those exclusions in the future. And I appreciate your flexibility in working in those different items so that we can try to bring this in as close to budget as possible, but, like you said, it's a long time coming.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve Engineering Analytics Fee Proposal for Design of Bridge Replacement Along Railroad Avenue and Schuler Street.
I have a motion in a second to approve the Engineering Analytics Fee Proposal for Design of Bridge Replacements Along Railroad Avenue and Schuler Street up to eighty-five thousand dollars plus gross receipts tax. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, Ms. Truch, if you have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor ProTim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries four zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item H. Deliverate an Act on Addendum to City Manager Contract. Mr. Mestas?
Mayor ProTainment Commission, this is a change to the City Manager Contract, paragraph four A, which will now read, "The city manager shall reside no more than twenty miles beyond the city limits of Raton."
Thank you. I believe we moved from a time limit to an actual mileage.
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
I will move to approve the Addendum to the City Manager Contract.
I have a motion in a second to approve the Addendum to the City Manager Contract. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Deliverate an Act on Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four-Twenty-One. Approval of Fiscal Year Twenty-Four February Financial Reports. Michael Lynn? I'm assuming unless you'd like to say something, Mr. Mestas?
I was going to say, Michael Lynn.
Mayor ProTainment Commission, so we bring to you this evening the financial reports reconciled through February twenty-nine. You'll see in your packet, we do provide the comparison reports for the lodger's tax. Um, I'm very optimistic, uh, hearing the presentation regarding the Little League, that, uh, for sure, the June distribution of lodger's tax, I think that will have a huge impact on our local lodgers. So, um, looking at the month of February, you'll see that compared to last year, uh, the lodger's tax is still trending downwards. Um, so we're just slightly below ten percent of the previous year. Um, but we will start to, especially with the spring break, uh, we've seen an uptick in traffic for the last two to three weeks, um, and then also Easter coming up. So I think that, uh, the returns for the month of March will probably be up slightly. Uh, we'll report to you next month on that. And then the gas tax, um, as our Public Works Director indicated, we have been monitoring this one for several months. Uh, it currently still is trending downwards, and we're close to sixteen percent down from the prior year. So that is still concerning to us because we use those dollars to leverage for the match on all of these various, uh, road construction projects that we have. Um, so we'll wait to see what the bids come in for this bridge project. Um, and I'll kind of use all of these figures, uh, for next year's budget discussions, but there is a possibility that if we fall short in the gas tax, we would have to look to the general fund to potentially, uh, cover the match on some of these projects. So that's something we'll talk about during our budget workshops. Cannabis excise tax, uh, the distribution, um, for the month of March was less than the previous year, but that one's been a little, uh, wonky just because we've had like a month or two where we didn't get a distribution and some months kind of doubled up. But, um, compared to last year, uh, we're twenty-four percent above that. Um, and then gross receipts overall, um, per our general fund projections, we're at, uh, almost six percent above the general fund budget projection. Now, compared to year-to-date, I do like to emphasize this, that we are fairly conservative in our projections, so that's kind of why we're exceeding the projection. But really, the, the year-to-date comparison, uh, with March of the previous year, we're just point two percent above, so. And then looking at our financial summary as of February twenty-ninth, uh, your available cash in the general fund, um, is the four million, two fifty-nine, twenty-seven, fifty-nine. I've also provided for you the cash balances in the remaining funds that we have, and then also, um, you know, we are going to start those, uh, budget discussions with our department heads, um, as we begin the budget process for next fiscal year. As we discussed previously, our interim budget deadline is June first. Um, I did want to report that, uh, the FY twenty-three audit was submitted last week. Uh, so we, uh, as soon as that's approved by the state auditor, then we could schedule our audit firm to come to the commission and give a presentation of the audit report. Um, just wanted to note that it does not become public information until five days after it's approved by the state auditor. We do have the ability to waive that five days, so if we need to do that in order to schedule the presentation at our next meeting, we would do that. Otherwise, so we just, um, wait for the five days. Otherwise, so we just wait for the five days. Also, the fixed asset inventory was completed March 12th through the 15th by Records Consultants, Inc., and that went pretty well, so... Do you have any questions? I did wanna point out in our DOT projects, we are showing a negative cash balance there, but that's just because we hadn't transferred any of the funds out of the gas tax. So before the end of this month, since March is the end of our third quarter, we will be doing a sizable transfer out of the Fund 217 to remedy that before we submit the third-quarter report to DFA.
Very good. Any questions or comments from Michaelan? It represents a lot of work, and we appreciate that very much.
Sure.
I would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve.
I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 202421, Approval of Fiscal Year 24, February Financial Reports. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate an act on Resolution 202422, Budget Adjustment Number 11, Fiscal Year 24.
Mayor, ProTiam and Commission, we do bring to you this evening Budget Adjustment Number 11. At a previous meeting, we did discuss that we received the Small Cities Assistance Distribution, and it is two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars more than what we had initially budgeted. So that's always a pleasant surprise. We have done a complete review of the budget, and we've met with some of our department heads to try to figure out how to allocate this for the remainder of the fiscal year. So you'll see, I am doing several line-item budget adjustments, but I did wanna call to your attention that I am doing an adjustment to adjust for the former city manager's salary and benefits. And that was something we had just projected during the budget process, but he was on the payroll from July through January 31st. So this adjustment would be to cover the actuals based on his retirement. Also, we do have a situation currently with the fire department. They are currently understaffed and will be losing another fireman here after the next two pay periods. So the fire chief did do an evaluation to try to calculate for coverage for the next two pay periods and what the impact of the overtime would be in order to cover all of the shifts. So he did give me the breakdown based on each of his employees by shift. That budgetary impact is fairly significant. We do hope that they do have some success in their recruitment efforts. But as you know, whether it's police or fire, there is a tremendous amount of training that goes into even getting a fireman trained to do the job unless they come from a previous, you know, another agency with prior experience. So I am proposing a fairly sizable adjustment. I don't know as of yet what the true salary savings will be because that can't be determined until we're fully staffed. So potentially, we may be able to take some of the funds out of the salary savings. I'm just proposing twenty thousand as of right now. But the increase to overtime is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that I'm projecting through the end of June. And then the remainder of the monies from the Small Cities Assistance, I'm proposing that we put it back into the abatement expense. You probably noticed over the last ten budget adjustments, there were several times that we took monies from that line item to put towards other needs within the budget. But it was the commission's wish this year that we do address certain abatement issues. And I do know that our planning and zoning is still working on that. Whether or not some of these, even like the JCPenney building, if those would be remediated and torn down before the end of the fiscal year, I don't know. We are working on some options where there is funding available through New Mexico Environment Department and potentially even a loan, zero percent loan program, and then they forgive forty percent. So we are looking into other options so that the city wouldn't have to put forth a hundred percent of the funds. So, you know, it's possible that we don't spend the remainder of these monies before the end of the fiscal year, but we'll certainly maybe have some projections to work off for the FY25 budget. And then also, with the closeout of the East 10th Frontage Road Project, we do need to do an additional transfer out of the Fund 217 to reflect the final project change order in engineering expenses, but that project is complete. Is there any questions?
Any questions from Michaelan?
Good, thank you.
That's good work. Thank you. I will move to approve the Resolution 2024-22, Budget Adjustment 11 for FY24.
I have a motion in a second for item J, to adopt Resolution 202422. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item K, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes.
Bottom line up front, the past few weeks have been very busy in the city. With the unpredictable spring weather and meetings, there's a lot going on. We have the Municipal League do First Amendment Auditor Training on March 15, which included police, zoning code enforcement, and all first-line supervisors. I also traveled to Albuquerque to meet with Katie Webb, the CEO of Crossroads New Mexico, to discuss substantive abuse and behavioral health issues that plague our city, county, and state. We had a visit from the Pueblo, Colorado IT Department to help them advise us on our IT modernization plans. It was a very good visit. And we will also be participating in the Trinidad State College Career Fair tomorrow to help recruit for police, fire, dispatch, and other city offices. The Big Rocks, with the treasurer, she is preparing the data and forms for next year's budget. The Police Department has met with the Municipal League to start the update on the Raton Police Department policies. They should be ready within a few months. The Fire Department is anticipating a few staffing shortages, as we discussed, and shift work schedules we're gonna develop to ensure we keep our 24/7 coverage. Excuse me. Public Works, the Public Works crew has been remodeling the concession stands at the ball field, and these efforts appear to save the city up to thirty thousand so we can put back into the Quality of Life Grant. Engineering, the grant for the airport that we voted on at the special meeting has been executed, and we are now coordinating the work for the fuel farm. With Facilities, we're looking at a reorganization of offices in the city. This will include swapping out officers, offices at the Visitor Center and the Education Annex. With the City Clerk, again, the City of Pueblo met with us to advise us on a number of issues on the updated city website. Economic Developer, our Director of Community and Economic Development, will be meeting businesses this week to give a demonstration of a new placer AI system. With mention in Dispatches, I would like to call out Public Works employees Michael Martinez and Gerardo Tafoya for passing probationary employment, and they are now full-time employees for the city. Closing thoughts. Almost twenty hours have passed since tragedy struck the city of Baltimore last night. It has been on my mind all day. Baltimore is special to me for many reasons, as my journey after leaving Trinidad some forty-three years ago, Maryland was my home for nearly fifteen years, almost as long as my first eighteen years in Trinidad. I received my doctorate from the University of Baltimore. I still have friends, classmates, and colleagues there, and I probably know the city better than I know Albuquerque or Denver. When family was in town, we would visit Fort McHenry, and from its reddish brick ramparts, you could clearly see the Key Bridge off in the distance. It was a beautiful and impressive structure. Mary and I would travel over the Francis Scott Key Bridge about seven or eight times a year. We lived in Southern Maryland and would drive Highway 301, North Tanner State 97, to the Key Bridge on 695 to get to Philadelphia, New York, New Jersey, Boston, or my sister's home in New Hampshire. That was the best way to avoid traffic out of Washington, DC and Baltimore, which very often could be a mess. While the loss of a bridge is huge news, my thoughts are with the victims and especially the six construction workers that are missing at this hour. Earlier this evening, we spoke about the debt we owe our citizen servants. We lost Officer Justin Hare in a senseless act of violence a little over a week ago, so I know all of us in some way feel that pain. For the highway workers who lost their lives in the middle of last night, I also feel their pain. Eleanor Roosevelt once said, "That freedom makes a huge requirement of every human being. With freedom comes responsibility. Sometimes that responsibility wears a badge, and sometimes it carries a shovel." If you pray, I ask for your prayers for the family of Officer Hare and for the families of the missing highway workers in Baltimore.
Thank you. As Bill said. Any further comments from the commission? Commissioner Honeyfield? Commissioner Giacomo?
None, ma'am.
Mr. Schuster?
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. I have nothing else, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.